The Monday, August 9th, 2021 meeting of the Market City Commission is now called to order at 6:01 PM. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, roll call please.
Commissioner Bonzal?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Hanley?
Here.
Commissioner Mayor?
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Here.
Mayor Protem Hill?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, we have an agenda this evening. Do we have a motion on this agenda? Commissioner Hanley?
A motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
And do we have a second? Commissioner Bonzal?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes 7-0. I have one announcement this evening. Beginning with our next meeting, which is on August 30th, we will move into in-person public comments during commission meetings. Members of the public can still write in comments, but they will not be read aloud during the meeting. So those will be at the dais. We'll get them here, right in front of us before each meeting. We can read them. Commissioners can choose to comment them, and they will be included in the minutes for all of the public to see. So that's one change that will be happening at the next meeting. That brings us to our public comment session. Public comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address. Go ahead and approach the podium if you'd like to make a public comment.
It's always fun going first, but thank you. Matthew Lutemberger, 1406 Garfield Ave, City of Marquette. So, for the last couple of weeks, I've been trying to figure out how to phrase this. And honestly, when you're in your car driving, it's longer than three minutes. So if I get cut off, please, cut me off. And I want to say these things because they're critical, but at the same time, I'm fortunate enough to have this critical event. So every time I come up here, I seem to get one of these letters saying, hey, dear occupant, recent survey has been shown. That's dated three days after our last meeting. So I hope it's nothing contentious. But I want to say, when you speak of affordable housing as a government, please consider, I'm fortunate enough to have one of these letters and have somebody with a yard. A lot of the construction you guys have been improving have been condos. There have been townhouses or PUDs. The thought of a family having a yard to play in is what I want somebody to think of as affordable if you're my government. I want you to say, the lowest person, the person who's just coming out of high school, literally high school, who wants to move out of their parents' house, has the ability to afford a home, or at least shelter, that's not in their parents' home or in their garage. And that's fortunate enough that they have a room. And this is what I mean by, if you're talking affordability, what's affordable for me is $1,600 a month because I have no kids and I have no family and I have no debts and I have nothing like that. But that's way too high. I'm fortunate enough to be able to pay that, to be able to represent that. That's way too high. Please, lower it. Do whatever you can. If that means canceling a construction project on Lake Shore because the only affordable housing that you can do, please. This is the other thing. Government, stop telling us what prices we should be at, okay? As far as a businessman, please, you shouldn't, as a government. You, as an individual who owns a home and who has prices or apartment complex or a business, go for it. Tell us how much you want to spend. But you, as a government entity, please remember that numbers can be shifted throughout time. When I, eight years ago, was doing real estate advertisements, there was a house for sale that was $400,000, way overpriced on any other house here in the market. It's now still for sale, eight years later, but at $800,000. That bell curve gets moved every time we open up a place that has 200 square feet, and it costs $200 a square foot. So if you have 800 square feet, you're spending $1,600. And they're okay with that on Lake Shore. But I spend three times more on water every summer because I have a garden and I have a yard. That's all I want, is more people to have gardens and yards, to spend more money on the city services and not a standard amount. Thank you for your time and keep doing what you do. You are doing a great job. I do appreciate it.
Anyone else for public comment? Three minutes. Name and physical address.
Margaret Brahm, 404 East Magnetic Street, Marquette, Michigan. I was saving another public comment for later in the day, and then I remembered a comment I heard from a party who spends a lot of time on Lake Shore Boulevard during the water cleanup two Saturdays ago. There's a lot of construction on Lake Shore Boulevard right now, and as a consequence of that, you can still get through on a vehicle, no problem. However, the bike path has been rerouted. And the feedback I got from this gentleman, who didn't give me his address, he just spends a lot of time in that corner of Lake Shore Boulevard, is that there's a problem with the bicyclists not going up and using the alternative bike route. And the problem is, and I've seen this myself, I drive that route every night. They just, it's like all of us, we get into a habit and they go the same way every time. And the problem is, there's not room for them. I don't know another way to say it. There simply isn't room for them now with all the construction. So I myself have been playing, you know, try not to hit the bicyclist. I'm not being funny when I say that, because there isn't enough room, and especially when they're coming down the hill. One guy on a bicyclist, this just happened to me, there was traffic going down the hill, there was traffic both ways. And he just blasted through all the traffic and made a left turn onto Lake Shore Boulevard. And but for, a lot of people slamming on their brakes, it would have been one of those tragedies. So I'm requesting that the city do one of their famous traffic studies about Lake Shore Boulevard now, as opposed to waiting until the construction is over. Because the bicyclist being rebooted is not happening. I don't know another way to say that. It's just not happening in a timely manner. And with the amount of traffic we have down there, it's a dangerous part of the city. So, thank you for your time. Bye.
Anyone else for public comment? City Clerk, do we have any written comments this evening?
Oh, we have no written comments.
Okay. Public comment is now closed. We have one presentation this evening by the Market Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. We have Chair David Allen with us. Go ahead and approach us at the side podium. You can present. Probably take a minute to get the presentation up. Thank you for joining us this evening, David. Looking forward to seeing the presentation you've got.
Okay. So, I was a little disappointed that I'm not as big a draw as some of our Brownfield hearings. But I guess I should be glad that we'll be out of here in less than four hours, so that, that's good. I'll try to keep it, in fact, to about 10 minutes. What I'm going to do is, I'm going to talk about three things. One, I'm just going to review quickly how Brownfield works, how this program operates, what it's for. Then I'm going to quickly go through the projects that are already underway, and maybe discuss just a little that are just starting. And then I'm going to provide just a few comments about what I think this all means for the community, and particularly since sometimes the Brownfield is controversial. So, first of all, just to remind you what Brownfield is, what this program does. It's been around since 1997. It's basically a program that is designed to help the redevelopment of certain kinds of properties that have obstacles. Now, traditionally, those obstacles have been environmental, contamination, those sorts of things. But it's been expanded over the years to include even things like blighted, abandoned, even historical buildings, et cetera. All of these have some sort of obstacle to development, which makes it hard for developers to go in and develop those. And yet, they tend to be on properties that could have benefit for the community to have them redeveloped. So, just conceptually, in big cities especially, you can imagine industrial zones that get used, abandoned, they're contaminated. They're hard to redevelop. You've got liability issues. And so new industries come in and they do another concentric ring in green space, leaving the other behind. And this just continues to happen over and over. So the idea is, is there some way to make it easier for the redevelopment of the industrial zones so that it's not just abandoned? That's sort of the concept behind it. The primary tool is TIFs, which I'm going to talk about in detail. It's basically a financing tool where you use the increase in property tax value, which causes an increase in taxes, to pay off some of these extraordinary costs for the Brownfield properties. Importantly, all Brownfield plans have to be approved, both by the authority that I sit on and the commission. In those cases where the state is involved, the state also has to approve. Now, when you're thinking about how the Brownfield works, there's three things to just keep in mind all the time for all projects, no matter what. One is, it has to be an eligible property. It has to fit certain criteria. You know, contamination, abandoned, blighted, those things we talked about. Only certain properties can be redeveloped using Brownfield. Second, there are only certain activities, certain eligible activities under the law that can be covered by Brownfield. And it's, you know, circumscribed, and I'm going to describe what those are in just a second. And third, you have to have an approved Brownfield plan. So in all cases, these three things are true. So let's talk about the properties. You can see there's some pictures here of some sort of things you think of, contaminated, you know, blighted, public nuisance, utilities disconnected, those kinds of things, historical property, functionally obsolete. These are the kind of properties that are hard to just go in and redevelop. The kinds of activities that you can do are either environmental or non-environmental. The environmental are the things that you more traditionally think of. There's a bunch of baseline work that has to be done to look at the historical releases of hazardous substances that could have gotten into soil or groundwater. There's actual sampling. If there's a reason to believe that there's been something historically, you actually go out and sample to see what contamination is present. And then you do baseline documentation to see what the timing is of these things, and this is important for liability. If the developer can show that all the releases are before they did the development, that releases them from the liability that still belongs to the original owners. There also do care activities on the environmental. These are things like, the things you have to do to prevent exposure. So like, if there's something seeping up from the groundwater, you might have to put vapor line of some sort that's an extra cost for the building, things like that. You also have to do things to prevent exacerbation of any contamination. So if there's contamination there, you can't do something in the development which actually make it worse. And then there are a bunch of specific removals and barriers and controls that can be put in place. Basically, anything to protect human health and the environment. There are also non-environmental activities, and especially in a place like Marquette that has, is a core community under the Brownfield law. And so here, like any place, we can do lead-in asbestos abatement, if there's tear downs, those sorts of things. Demolition itself can be covered. And then in core communities, there are other things like site preparation, infrastructure improvements, property acquisition, relocation of public facilities. All those things can be covered as well. Now, this is the most important slide. And you should study this slide every time you think, I wonder if we're giving a handout to developers, or I wonder if we're, you know, removing our ability to get tax revenue for the city. This is the concept that sits behind all the TIFs for Brownfield. And these are color-coded, and so the orange at the bottom of this slide shows the baseline taxable value when the Brownfield plan starts. This is set by the Brownfield plan. This is the amount of taxable value that exists when the project starts. The taxes from that are not touched. So throughout the Brownfield project, that orange bar remains the same. So there is no sudden diversion of taxes from the city to Brownfield. Whatever taxes were there historically continue to be collected by the city. Now, for most Brownfield properties, as you can imagine, this orange line tends to be pretty stable, pretty stagnant. These are properties which tend not to have a lot of value, and they tend not to go up unless you do something. So that's a very important thing to keep in mind, is that orange bar. Now, these eligible activities that go under the Brownfield plan are paid for by the developers upfront. And that's increasing the value of the property, which is the blue bars here. So all of a sudden, the taxable value goes way up because of developer inputs. That money that is collected from the developers for the increased value of properties goes back to pay these extraordinary costs for Brownfield. Those contamination things, those obsolete building things, all of those activities go back to pay the developer for those extraordinary costs. Not for the entire development, only for the extraordinary costs under the Brownfield law. There's this optional purple, which is the five years where money can return to a revolving fund for the local Brownfield authority. This can be important if you want to try to do things even above and beyond to try to create even more incentives, so like affordable housing, things like that. A local fund might be a way to try to even further incentivize development for things which are hard to do otherwise. But that's optional. And then the green is once the, all the costs are paid off. This is the additional money which then comes back to the taxing jurisdictions to the city. So the idea is, if you do this right, you're talking about a property that wouldn't otherwise be developed, that is not providing very much taxes, but has these extraordinary costs. And here's a way to get a developer interested, have them pay it upfront, it gets paid back for just those costs, and then you increase the stream in the future. So that's the idea. That's the only slide you have to remember. If you forget all the others, that's okay. Here's who's currently on the Brownfield authority. We have one vacancy. And we've had no unexcused absences this year. This is a little out of order, but this is another important thing to mention. In addition to the Brownfield plan, there are a set of legal documents to show how the cascade of payments will actually go in any particular project. And so this sets sort of the order. Typically, bond-issue payments take priority over the others, so city bonds get paid back first. There are some exceptions to that, but you would have to approve that. And then there's reimbursement of eligible activities to developers, where that comes in the cascade. And importantly, it is all limited by law to the capture taxes from the increased investment. So the money, there's not, there's never a debt. It's always whatever the increased taxes are, property taxes that are coming in, that is the limit for what can be paid in any given year. Now, quickly, I just want to run through, sort of, you've heard about all these, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time. But in each of these, I think the key, more important than the words, are the pictures. I think that these are, these pictures are of sort of what the Brownfield law had in mind. When you look on the left, that Lake Shore area with the tank farm and the railroads and the pier, and even on around, which isn't part of a Brownfield, but that whole front is an industrial area, which got essentially abandoned when the industry stopped. And so the question is, is there some way to get developers to come back and do something with that, given that it's got these difficulties with contamination? And so the answer is yes. And so this is one of the Brownfield, this is the Founder's Landing, there's a whole series of projects here. Forty-two residential condominiums, eighty-four Room Hampton Inn, $21 million in investment, thirty-nine jobs, full-time jobs. Pictures on the right of what it looks like now. There's some more Founder's Landing. This is the additional buildings going up. You can see them going up right now. Underground parking facility, sixty-eight apartments, another $21.2 million that's been completed so far. Here's what began in 2020. This is the building right next to the parking deck next to the other building that went up previously. Fairfield Inn was completed in 2021. Townhomes began in 2021. You can see those going up as well. The Founder's Landing project is also funding part of the city project to do this, the pier redevelopment. And so this includes a 45% state tax capture, so we're leveraging state money as well. You can sort of see the before and after that. That's due to get going here, I think, soon. Here's Liberty Way, just up Washington Street a little ways. There's the before on the top and the after afterwards. $11 million in property taxes over 30 years. Twenty-nine Phase 1 jobs, 30 Phase 2 jobs, 154 UPHB jobs. Here's the former Lake Shore Foundry property where a million-dollar bed and breakfast was put in, and it has already reimbursed, including the local fund. This is the largest one, the replacement hospital. That involved, of course, the roundabouts on the highway and the movement of municipal building. And this very large facility, which you all know about. And I'm not going to read all those figures, but I am going to dwell on this. First of all, it's a $37 million in activities that were covered by the Brownfield. So it was by far the largest project we've tackled. But this is the most important thing here. Originally, the Brownfield plan anticipated $170 million investment, so that $170 million increase in property value. And that would take 25 years from 2016 to pay off the Brownfield activities. The actual investment turned out to be $330 million, so it's only going to take 12 years from 2016, which means it'll be paid off in 2028. So that's really good news. That means at the end of that, we're going to start to see this flow of money back into the city. Then we have the Patisserie on Washington as well, sort of before and after. Jobs walkway, et cetera. The Customs House, which is underway. Removal of the Burger King. There's an issue still about whether the tax capture from the state will be included. So far, the answer is no, but we're still working on that to see if we can convince the state to change their minds about that. And then, of course, the famous fault which caused the four-hour meeting recently, which is quite an interesting meeting. This is just getting underway. We just, you just approved the Brownfield plan, so if this goes forward, it looks like it would be 70,000 square foot for the hotel, commercial space, 40 residential units, integrated parking deck, about $30 million in investment. Just quickly, there are, there's more than one kind of TIF. There's Brownfield TIFs, but there's also the DDA and the LDFA. And in order to get state capture under Brownfield, you have to get agreements for the DDA or the LDFA to give up their TIFs during the Brownfield plan, or you forego the state part. We've had a lot of success with both of those authorities to get agreements at 231 West Patisserie, Customs House, and Vault Marquette. So that, we're working well together, and that's all going swimmingly so far. There'll probably be more issues like this that come up in the future. Same thing for DDA, same slide, basically. Key accomplishments from last year, Founder's Landing, the two Marquette places under construction, Fairfield Inn was completed. Townhomes are under construction. Customs House is under construction. UP State Bank is nearing completion, and we've got the Brownfield plan for Vault. For next year, our key projects are going to be Founder's Landing still, Three Marquette Place, the development of parcel 2C, the pier redevelopment bonds and construction there. We're going to continue to try to get state capture for UP State Bank project. Vault Marquette, of course, you know, much more to be heard. There'll be, well, people will be back here, I'm sure, about all the upcoming plans here, but work plans, et cetera, are coming down the pipe. There are, there is concrete information coming in about developers interested in doing workforce housing with Brownfield and some of the other locations. So I'm hoping that in this coming year, we'll actually have some real projects that are focused on that. And then I think community outreach is going to continue to be one of our issues as we face some of these controversies. And I just want to close with a couple of comments from sort of my own point of view about how Brownfield works and what it means for Marquette. You can, you know, take all these facts and figures for what they're worth. It's either worth it to you or it's not. It's created some jobs, it's created some money, it'll eventually be taxable revenue. To put it all in perspective, I can't give you exact timelines, but just the projects which have been approved and are underway, you're talking about, once they're completed altogether, about a million a year in additional revenue for the city. Now, it's going to start in a big way in about seven years because of the hospital, but then there are other ones that will come after that. So, I mean, you just have to ask yourself whether it's worth it. That's one of the big metrics, I think, is how much money actually flows back. But more than that, I think you can look around the state and around the country at places that do Brownfields and places that don't. And you can see the difference between the density of development, the kind of green space and sprawl that occurs. What we're trying to do is create development that is in the center of the city, that causes vibrancy, that reuses the things which have been abandoned. And I think it's working, but it's just another tool. So I mean, you have to, I think there are legitimate issues for people to raise about whether it's the kind of development they want or not. But another thing to keep in mind is, development's coming to Marquette. Guaranteed. It's, the market is going to bring development here. You only have a certain number of tools you can use to influence it. This is a big one, but you're still not going to get everything you want, even with this. But I think it's working well, and I'm happy to take, try to answer any questions. But I think it's working well, and I'm happy to take, try to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, David, I really appreciate that excellent presentation. You know, one thing I wanted to bring up, and then I'll, I'll start with Pro Tem Hill, and we'll go down the line alphabetically from there. The very first picture you had of founders landing, I'm pulling it up, I don't know if you can put slide ten on there? That old picture of the shoreline of Marquette with the tanks and everything, and something you said just now struck me, I don't know if anyone's driven through Green Bay, Wisconsin recently, but if you look out by the waterside, it looks very much like that left-hand picture. And when you think about communities who do use these tools, communities who don't, or maybe they don't have the, the ability to, but it really struck me that that could still be our lakeshore if we hadn't done some of these projects. So thank you to the work you're doing now, thank you to past brownfields and past commissions for seeing this as a tool and something that we could use. I certainly agree that there are a lot of things we have to weigh when we make these decisions, and now I think it gets a little more difficult as time goes on, but it does, it does help to kind of reflect on the past and what, what it could have been if we hadn't done anything, so. That's my only comment, we'll go with Pro Tem Hill, and like I said, we'll go down the line.
Thanks for providing that excellent overview. I think you might know something about Green Bay.
I do.
Do you want to say what you know about Green Bay?
Well, I, Green Bay is a, is a place where I spent ten years working on a billion-dollar litigation that was successful, they just finished a billion-dollar cleanup there, and so that city is very much turning back to the waterfront, and huge amounts of things happening on, so it's, soon we can look to Green Bay as a shining example.
Wonderful, glad to hear it.
He also has a book coming out about Green Bay, everybody, so, I don't know if you knew that, but it's, it's really kudos to you, and kudos to the work of getting, finding the tools to do these redevelopments. I think, when do you guys meet? Is the only other?
It's, once a month.
Third Thursday.
Third Thursday at eight o'clock in the morning.
So the, those meetings are where these kind of details are hashed out, they are open to the public now with, with COVID, so they happened over at the Service Center Building, right? So, yeah, so I've attended them before I was on the commission, it's really, really interesting, you, you have a chance, again, you know, people come to our meetings because we have final say, but I think going to their meetings is where you get to hear how this has developed, how it's working, that, more into the details, it's a really important opportunity that, I think, if you can take advantage of that, that is another way to have input into this process, and.
Mayor Pro Tem, can I just say one thing about that?
Sure.
I think it's, not just in brownfield, everywhere, but brownfield especially, it's hard to pay attention to enough things, but it is absolutely vital that you pay attention to the early steps. It's often when you get to the very, 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 very last step, when the thing which is being decided is actually fairly minor, and all the guts of the decisions have been made previously, and so whether it's planning commission, or brownfield, or any other things you care about, it, you really do need to have your voice heard early on in order to have influence, and you will have influence.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mayor, anything?
I just want to thank you, David, for coming in and doing a great presentation. I always think you do a good job at kind of summarizing and explaining the amount of good that brownfields can do, and really kind of explaining the process a little bit more, and I, I think it's a good thing to just kind of remind members of the public, because it is a complicated process. As someone that was on the authority prior to being on the commission, it's also an entirely different thing when you're looking at it from the authority's perspective versus the commission's, but really appreciate the work you and the rest of the authority are doing. Thank you.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Thank you very much, Dave, appreciate it, it's a great walk down memory lane a little bit, particularly with the old nineteen forty picture of Marquette Harbor. I might suggest that, besides Green Bay, I think a poster child for how to do things right in terms of that type of brownfield restoration would be the Luth, Minnesota, and what they've done at Canal Park, and how they, how they put that all package together. So certainly, we have great examples that we can look at. I would put my caution hat on, though, that what the brownfield is able to do is only because of the full faith and credit of the City of Marquette in terms of backing up the loans, and as our CFO might be able to describe at some point, we have a limited ability to do that, that's not an infinite amount of money. And I think we are likely coming to a point where we will have to make decisions strategically where to put that funding base, and those are going to be hard decisions based on the number of projects you all may have in the, in the, in the mill coming versus what we can afford to actually do. Something that would help us certainly terrifically would be the ability to change the money that's going into the brownfield revolving fund to go into the general fund quicker, to make the economic health of Marquette more substantial, so we can in turn do more brownfields in the matter that we've been doing them. So I think that one slide you had was very excellent, certainly in trying to make that point, and certainly for this commission, it's important as we move through a difficult period of, I think, financial austerity, to begin to realize the criticality of getting that money turned into the general fund as quick as we can, and to be able to do what we have to do. But again, thank you very much for a great presentation.
Thank you.
Commissioner Banzel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and David, thank you so much for your very informative presentation. You know, when we served together on the brownfield authority, before I was elected to the commission, I always thought that you were, you know, one of the most insightful of my colleagues on the, on the authority, and, and clearly, you really understand the process and believe very passionately in what you're all, what you're doing, and that's inspiring to see. You know, I wish we had, you know, we could clone you and, you know, just like put you, put those clones onto all the, into all the vacancies on our city board, so, thank you for that. But, but I mean, I, I was just, I just wanted to say that, I was reflecting before the meeting tonight, you know, reading through the final version of the strategic plan that we'll be voting on later, and thinking about the priorities that we've all set for the city for the next couple of years, you know, things that really jump out, housing affordability, economic development, redeveloping problem properties in the city, especially the old hospital property, environmental preservation, and smart growth, and sustainable growth that's allowing us to preserve our environment and conserve the natural spaces and the periphery of the community. All of those things intersect with the work that the brownfield authority is doing, and so it's really critical that we have, continue to have a good working relationship between the city commission and the MBRA, and I'm really excited to see, I was glad to hear the news about the workforce housing, I agree, hopefully in the next year or so, we have some concrete projects that we can start moving forward on as a city, in concert with you and with, with some developers to provide more affordable housing in the community. But in any case, thank you very much, and I'm excited for the next couple of years.
Commissioner Davis?
I didn't think I had anything to say, but then, now that I think about it, I am very much appreciate what Mayor Smith said about the other cities that have not had brownfield, and what it has been like for Marquette. I think the, the previous administration, the previous commission had a great deal of insight to bring brownfields here to the city, and we also have a great staff in Sherry Davies and a consultant, and I really appreciate your work on the board. I also appreciate what Commissioner Stonehouse said about some of the cautions that are being sent before us as we look at future brownfields, and, and that will be some of our more difficult decisions in the future. But I do appreciate, and I particularly appreciate your descriptions of the, your concept, because it's something that is very difficult for the general community to, to understand and to get a grip on. I also appreciate your closing comments about trying to build the core of the city rather than to move out into green space, so thank you very much for the way you present besides your presentation.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hanley?
Thank you. I wanted to thank you in general, coming onto this commission, I was probably the least informed about brownfield out of anyone on the commission, so I took the time to learn about them, because obviously, it was something that was going to come up quite often, and I feel like I understand them a lot now, but your presentation today is something that I'm happy that everyone gets to see in the public, because it explains it in such an easy way to understand the basic of it. Obviously, there's much more in-depth stuff that you guys do on the, on the brownfield authority that goes deep more in detail, but it's really nice to see it laid out so clearly for people, so that the average person, because, especially with the Vault project, we had a lot of people, or I had a lot of people who came to me, about what is this brownfield, why are we giving them city money? And this at least lays it out to explain why we do what we do and why we put them in there, so I want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, David, I certainly appreciate you joining us today, keep up the great work, and we'll look forward to hearing from you again soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Sherry. All right, moving on to item number two, we have our consent agenda. Commissioners, do we have a motion on the consent agenda? Commissioner Banzel?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do we have a second, Commissioner Davis?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven zero. And on to unfinished business, item number three, City of Marquette Strategic Plan for fiscal years 2021-2023. City Clerk, could we please have the background?
Thank you, Mayor. The city commission convened two work sessions on April fourteenth and April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one, in order to give input, review recommendations from staff and boards and committees, and provide guidance for drafting the City of Marquette Strategic Plan for fiscal years 2021 to 23. The result was the draft strategic plan, which was presented to the city commission for consideration at their July twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-one meeting. The city commission had varying opinions on several topics and did not adopt the plan that evening. The commission then requested city staff return with a new version of the plan based upon the discussion that evening. The new version of the plan is attached. Fiscal effect, none. Recommendation, adopt the fiscal year 2021 to 23 strategic plan as presented, alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Banzel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that we adopt the fiscal year 2021 to 2023 strategic plan as presented.
And do we have a second? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Well, Your Honor, is it possible to make a motion for discussion?
I think so, I'm going to check with our city attorney if there's something else, a different order, we may need to do things on.
So a motion has been made that should either die or be seconded. Certainly, once the motion is made, that would be an appropriate time for discussion before a vote is taken.
So if once there's a second, then we can have some discussion, it's kind of what I was thinking, Commissioner Stonehouse. Do we have a second on the motion in that case? Commissioner Mayor?
I'll second the motion, Your Honor.
All right, so we have a first and a second, and we are now at a discussion point, I will first pitch it off with Commissioner Banzel, because he made the motion.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to thank city staff for going back and working on a couple of things that, massaging out a couple of the issues that we had raised and discussed at the previous meeting, and I was happy with the, with the document that was returned to us, and as I was reading through the strategic plan, I was really becoming excited about what we can accomplish in the next couple of years, even given the fact that, of course, we're under fiscal constraints, as always, and as many communities are, and given the fact that we're never going to approve every single aspect of this, this plan, I think it lays out a very progressive and inspiring vision for the next couple of years in the City of Marquette, and I can't wait to get to work on it.
Commissioner Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. I also would like to thank city staff for taking the extra time and effort and energy, especially with everyone trying to work on finalizing their budgets, and I'm sure this was not an easy request, but I appreciate city staff doing it for us and being so upbeat about it. I do, I, I think the word excited is a pretty good way to look at this, it's, it's a great document, I really appreciate the tweaks that have been made to it, and kind of taking all of the discussion that happened at our last meeting and varying opinions, and somehow getting all of it to still fit within this newer draft of it. I am very excited about the things that we could possibly accomplish within this document over the next two years, and I, again, just want to thank staff for working with us on it.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Stonehouse, did you have an item for discussion?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. I'll go back to the same one when we had the strategic plan originally up, which is essentially that I would move, I would request that all references to the ad hoc housing report be removed from the, from the strategic plan, and I say that as a matter of process, procedure, and transparency. We have to put all of this, I guess, within a framework of understanding what happened. About a year and a half ago, give or take, we appointed Commissioner Banzel to chair an ad hoc committee on housing, affordable housing, and he did so. Some delay there, obviously, as we went through COVID and the challenges that represented, but about the middle of that process, he presented a draft to the commission, we discussed that draft, understanding that that was really draft of a work in progress, it was not a finished document in draft form, nor intended to be. And we all discussed it, we had some good ideas on it, he took them forward, concluded his committee work, wrote the report, gave the report to the commission where it was accepted. Accepting a report does not mean this commission adopted the report. Since then, we have had no discussion whatsoever on the report that was submitted and the recommendations made. We have never done that. I think it's very important that the public be present when we do so, and that we do it in the proper order. In other words, we do not make it part of the strategic plan we are approving tonight, because we would then be approving his recommendations, which we may or may not do properly, and that's what I am, I am requesting that we do. I think it's, it's absolutely vital that we make this as transparent as possible, that we all, while we all have had an opportunity to read the report and recommendations, and again, it's a fine document, we have never had an opportunity to discuss them, and as a commission, we well understand that many times, our particular viewpoints, our votes, our thoughts are enhanced when we have the opportunity for free and open discussion. As we have not had that, I think the best process is simply to withdraw the, the inferences to the ad hoc report from the strategic plan. We go ahead and hold a work session, we, we work it through, we understand, we accept, and we adopt at that point those elements of that report that we so choose to, then we simply make that an addendum to the strategic plan, so the information doesn't disappear, it becomes official, and it is done in the process that it clearly should be done in, rather than simply tagged on as a, something that we accepted, but we just put on there because we felt like we had to, in some kind of desperate rush, do that. And that's my motion, I guess, in a rambling form, but.
I was about to ask if that was a motion, because I heard you say a move, but it was a pretty long motion, so. If you're going to make a motion, I would ask maybe that you make it a little bit more succinctly for our city clerk.
I, I would, I would make a motion, Your Honor, that we add priorities, that we use this.
City attorney is.
Isn't there already a motion on the table?
There is a motion, so we have to vote on that first. We could have someone amend the motion.
Yes.
If you wanted to make a motion to amend the motion.
I would amend the motion, Your Honor, I would amend the motion with the same language as contained within the document that you received a couple days ago, which basically is the ad hoc housing committee report, to add the priorities of that report to year one, such as schedule a work session to discuss further direction, and to remove all references to the ad hoc housing committee report until the commission formally reviews and agrees to all actions.
Okay, I believe I understand the motion. Do we have a second on this amendment to the motion?
No.
So the amended motion dies on the floor, so we are back to the original motion and second, and we're in discussion, all right? Just making sure. Okay, so, Commissioner Banzel?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I just want to first say that while I, I don't agree with the, the motion to amend that was just made by Commissioner Stonehouse, I do think that he raises a, a valid point, which is that we haven't had a discussion as a commission of the ad hoc housing committee report, and, and I want to be clear that it's not my report. The report was, I helped write it, but I was working very closely with our city staff, Dennis Stackewitz, Sean Hobbins, other people within our, our community development department, but also, and also that report was unanimously approved by the ad hoc housing committee at our meeting in June, our final meeting in June. But I, I do agree that we, before we move forward on the items outlined in the strategic plan, that we should have a work session, or perhaps might even be more appropriate to have a special meeting where we can essentially do what we'd normally do during a work session, except at the end, we can maybe take some votes to direct the city manager to do certain things, because ultimately, this is a plan, not a binding document, that would be my recommendation. So I do share Commissioner Stonehouse's desire to have more formal discussions about this as a commission moving forward, hopefully in the near future.
And I would agree with Commissioner Banzel and Commissioner Banzel, Commissioner Stonehouse and Commissioner Banzel that we need more discussion. On page eight of the.
On page eight of the strategic plan, oh, now I lost it. Touched it, and it went away. One of the very first pieces, if I can recall, is to engage the community, community review process. So I think a work session and/or a forum or some kind of a community event would be a natural next step as we move through this. So I guess how I see this is that the ad hoc housing committee did a nice job putting together a report for reviewing consideration, and it's our job through the strategic planning process to actually carry out those next steps. That's how I envision it, anyway. It may not be worded quite like that, but that's how I see this going. I don't know how other commissioners feel about that, but do we want to? Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
And I have another timing question. Because I think, you know, there's timing, and again, thanks to city staff for, very much, for going back and working on this and helping shape it a little bit more as we are dealing with something that's not even, it's an active timeframe because of COVID that we, this is not merely or purely a proactive. This is something that's actually currently happening, which I think can be confusing. And so there's an addendum that's been added, which I thank you, that I think clarifies some of the things that have happened, like the redevelopment ready pieces. So that has been, so there's just, with COVID, I'm going to, I mean, it's COVID. We would have gone through all this in a process that would have made a little more, it would have been more clear. And I just wanted to raise another significant issue, which is in the document, but might need further discussion, which is the area on climate change. As folks may know, today, the sixth report from the international body that looks at climate change on an international level with 234 scientists came out today and issued what they're calling a red flag warning to us about the fact that we can impact climate change, but we need to act now. And so while we discuss how to react to climate change in the current version, there's not discussion of what we can be doing to reduce our impact as a community and our contributions to climate change. And so I would also ask that we maybe have, right now, the language is about how do we figure out how to deal with what's coming at us? I do, I want to recommend that we, and this is very clearly in the climate report that was issued today, which is a scientific consensus. And then coming in November is going to be a next phase where people are going to get together in Scotland and talk. So I think the timing could work out well for us to have another meeting on climate change and how we want to address it. We've taken steps, significant steps, but they're, it really is critical right now. And I wondered what, I wanted to bring that up as a topic of discussion.
Commissioner Davis?
I'm sitting here thinking about all the work that has been done on the strategic plan. And as commissioners raise issues, I'm hoping that they can suggest specific language change. And I gave some thought to Commissioner Stonehouse's, and maybe Protem Hill wants to think about what she would like, specific language she would like changed in the meantime. But I'm looking, there are two things that are on housing affordability in the plan specifics. And on page 11 is housing affordability. And I don't have a problem with the background, but where it says the background that we had an ad hoc housing committee, but perhaps the next two paragraphs could be taken out, and also the year one activities could be taken out. And in that year one activities, that we just state that we will have a work session on the ad hoc housing report.
Mr. Davis, which page? I'm on page 11.
That was on page, oh, I'm sorry, that's page 15.
Thank you. I'm like Ericson Kultur.
I'm sorry.
It's not add.
Yeah, well, I thought it was 11. So anyway, that's one. And then the second one is on page 18. And in this, I maybe would suggest that we get rid of the first two paragraphs in the background and just say the community development director was tasked with researching such a partnership, a public-private partnership. And then the rest of that can stay. So, you know, rather than send this back to the city staff, I'm wondering if we could come up with some language that is acceptable to all of the commissioners so that we can accept the plan tonight. And that was a lot to say at one point.
I'm looking through the suggestions.
If you would like me to repeat that, I could.
Commissioner Davis, and, I mean, personally, I'm fine with the plan as is, but if that's something that's going to make it be a unanimous vote, which we can't really predict, but if someone would be more comfortable with that, I mean, I don't think that's a terrible change. I don't know, Stonehouse?
Your Honor, I submit that we all would love to change the plan a thousand ways. And I submit that we probably just ought to each actually be a politician and give a little bit and go with the document that we have in the way it is so printed. And if we have anything that we really need to take a look at, and I, for example, agree a little bit with Commissioner Hill, that we do need to take a good, hard look at climate. We need to roll that perhaps into how we deal with migrants coming in. And by migrants, I mean people fleeing the hotter environment of the South, how we adapt the City of Marquette to be able to grow without necessarily being too concerned with the environmental aspects. That makes sense. I'm drawing an operational distinction from a larger world distinction, that that might be a subject for a good committee to take a look at. But if, we can, again, we can chip away at this thing all night and we'll never get to the end.
And my, if I'm following on that, may I? Um, thank you. My concern is that because we have operated under the practice that if it's not mentioned, we don't do it. That's my concern on the emissions piece. I confess, I was actually working on what I said about climate change, so I didn't follow everything Commissioner Davis said. I'm sorry. So I don't know, those detailed things, but I'm, I was asking for a big, just a placeholder, and it may actually be a way in here to discuss, we haven't discussed the process of working through the strategic plan, and maybe there's a way to bring that in. I'd be very comfortable with that. And, you know, having to react, maybe, so if you have a thought about that, I'm open. I would like to hear that.
I'm wondering if maybe your city manager might be able to help answer that question. I'm sorry to hunt this over your way, Karen, but we've got the climate plan in place already. Obviously, the strategic plan, at some level, will be adopted at some point. And how do we see that moving forward with the current climate concerns?
So I think that, so what I'm understanding is there's a request or an idea of adding in climate change or climate adaptation.
Mitigation. Technically, it's mitigation versus adaptation. Mitigation, yeah.
Thank you for the clarification. And this is something that is coming out of something, a larger report that was issued today, that's something that we have at our office has not had a chance to look at. But what I hear you're asking is incorporating into a page here at this time.
And I'm wondering if maybe that could be part of the community master planning process, or like Commissioner Stonehouse said, maybe an ad hoc committee to review those details. I know we talked about, you know, green infrastructure in the city, green vehicle fleets. I mean, we had all kinds of different ideas. It could be, I know Dennis Stackewitz had mentioned this whole separate climate plan, and maybe we need to kind of revive that. So I guess I'm just looking for another way that we can kind of.
So what I'm hearing is a request for some sort of either a work session to decide how this goes forward, and that's going to be, you know, a discussion with you on how we want to move forward with this, whether it is, you know, assigning a task force, an ad hoc committee for this. So I don't think that it is fair, in my opinion, to be asking our departments at this point, or a committee that doesn't exist yet, to have a section in here when we don't know which way this will go. This plan, this document here, was put together with collaboration of boards and committees and the Commission, and had multiple work sessions to get the content that's in here or to have the departments putting in the content here. So I have no problem adding it to our list to discuss on how we move forward with this and exploring this further. Just because it's in here doesn't mean that it's going to get lost on my desk. I will write it down so it doesn't. But it doesn't mean that it goes, it falls on deaf ears by any means.
And I, if I may, right, and because we didn't have a process for the things that might have come up, and then we wanted to address them, like we created a committee that talked about housing, and then we moved on housing. I can't think right now of another example where that, where we've had something come up that was at a high enough level to deal with it.
Hiring city manager, hiring city attorney, some of those pieces.
Okay, yeah, so that fall, yeah, in the operations piece. So, yeah, I guess, I was, I was asking. I don't, I didn't, I just, it is something, and I can tell you, because I've read the plan that we have several times, it doesn't address mitigation, so, which is critical. So I'm just, I think what I heard you say is it will be something that, I guess, I, how exactly would it be then addressed? I guess I just, I got lost in all the.
I think that's something we were going to explore amongst this conversation. I think there was a great idea to incorporate this into the community master plan. Obviously, somehow, in the future years, be working and focusing on that and the strategic plan. But I think that is something that when we, when we start having the meetings or the work sessions, that's how we, I would expect some direction from that.
Absolutely. And I've been, I was trying to wait till the end, but I'll jump in now because it makes sense, I think. I really appreciated Commissioner Davis's comments last time about creating an ad hoc committee to review the strategic planning process, and I think that may make sense in tandem with the master planning process, having, rolling into that, you know, this fall, winter, when that starts. So I think that ad hoc committee can look at some of these big ideas and how to formulate them into questions so that our public can help us prioritize the goals and needs of our community. So that's kind of what I'm thinking, and I think we tried to do that better this time and take more input from the Commission than we ever have before, but there's a lot of room for improvement, and that, a lot of that is on me. And I take that myself, but I know we can move forward and we can be better moving forward. So I do think that would be the appropriate time to bring up this climate mitigation. We've got a number of other issues we want to probably plug into there as well. I know childcare is one we've talked about. I know that broadband is one we've talked about. There are a lot of those pieces. Commissioner Davis?
I really appreciate Commissioner Stonehouse's comments about, perhaps we just need to all give a little and take a look at this plan and let it move forward. It does not mean it can't be changed as we move along. And Protem Hill, I will certainly join you in making climate mitigation a priority. It doesn't necessarily need to be in this particular plan to still be a priority as we move along the master plan and an addendum to the strategic plan. I guess, when Commissioner Stonehouse said, let's all just kind of sit back and give a little and accept the way this plan is at this point, we have a motion on the floor. I understand what Commissioner Stonehouse is saying, and I, there are much of what he is saying I agree with, that we do need to discuss that plan much further before we have specific actions. But tonight, I think we ought to just kind of know that nothing is perfect. Everything is doable.
Yeah, and I'm not asking for a perfect plan. I'm asking for a better understanding of process, I think, is where I'm at right now. And I think what Mayor Smith just said makes that more clear. That had not been said. And so I'm making sure that that got said and that we understand how, because again, you know, there, we were operating under a philosophy then. If it wasn't in the strategic plan, we didn't do it. I don't, I don't think, I don't think it's quite fair to say that there were, we were using this as our priority setting document. So if we're going to have more flexibility, then that also needs to be made clear, I think. I'm just, I really am asking for that process question. Do we have a sense of that? Because we've, people have been told no. And I'm comfortable voting tonight. I'm not aiming for that. I want to vote on this. But maybe, you know, that there's a sense that we're going to report back at the next, whenever, at some point, about what the process is going to be going forward. Can we put a thought?
I guess I see it as a part of the community master planning process, to poll the public as to what specific needs around climate mitigation they see as are critical, personally. But if there's another take, that's something that we'll have to discuss further. Commissioner Bonzel?
Not necessarily now, I guess would be my point.
I completely agree with you, Mayor Smith, that we, that climate change, adaptation, and mitigation both need to be included in the community master planning process. But I do want to note a couple of things, though, which is that on page four of the strategic plan, when we're talking about our, you know, top five priorities, what the intent of the City Commission is for this plan, we do say, you know, first of all, we identify climate change clearly as one of those top five priorities for the next two years. And I completely understand and agree with you, actually, Mayor Protem, that it's not as specific as I would personally like on the mitigation side. But we are saying that we want to support the continued implementation and updating of the previously adopted climate adaptation plan, et cetera, et cetera. And so I think that in the next two years, if we decide as a Commission that that's a top priority for us, which it sounds like it is, then I still think that we can take action on that in the next couple of years. I actually think one of the lessons of this whole process is that we need to maybe be a little bit more flexible with the strategic plan and how we use that document. So, and then also, the county master plan, which was recently approved, talks a lot about climate change, and that document should certainly be used by local municipalities like us as we're going back to our local community master planning processes. And that does have a lot of public opinion data already, both from the county as a whole and the City of Marquette specifically, that we could make use of.
That sounds, again, I appreciate that, I completely agree that this has been a clarification of the strategic plan process, and I really appreciate that conversation and that opportunity to have that be more clear. So I'm in agreement.
Any other Commission discussion before we go ahead and take a vote? Just making sure this is not a roll call, so we will go ahead and take a vote. All in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven zero. All right, second public comment session of the evening. Public comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address. Come on up.
Margaret Brom, 404 East Magnetic Street. From strategic plan to ongoing volunteer activities, I'm taking the time to update you on three projects that are happening in the city right now. First of all, Commissioner Sally Davis will never bring this up in public because she's too modest, but if you drive by Hurley Field, the new playground is going up. And that would not have happened but for her efforts to listen to a constituent during an election campaign, bring it to the attention of the Rotary, and somehow get the Board of Light and Power to donate three poles to put up netting to protect the little kids. Because the city, one of the reasons the city was going to shut it down is liability for softballs going into that area. So you don't wait till the project is over to thank someone. Commissioner Davis deserves thanks tonight. Another group that deserves thanks is diver Don Fosbender and his divers, who recently completed their third annual cleanup of the Lower Harbor. I've seen that picture of the tank farm ad nauseum. What he has shown us the world is how contaminated the Lower Harbor was with old tires and debris. This year was a little bit different. They focused on the big tires, and they had to have city equipment and city dumpsters. I'm not a tire expert. I can just tell you, when they dumped the biggest tires into those huge waste management buckets, the whole thing shook. It was such a big deal. In three years, they have removed 11 tons of material from the Lower Harbor. All of this with volunteers, 20 divers, 30 people on land, and support from the city, but the city couldn't pay the people to come and do this. And the third effort is one that is near and dear to my heart. Commissioner Hill, excuse me, Mayor Protem Hill, has talked many years about climate change. We've gone from 20, 11 tons of debris from the Lower Harbor to 2.65 pounds of cigarette butts being sent to the first recycling effort in the City of Marquette. And as near as we can tell, in the work with the Superior Watershed Partnership and the city, we are the first city in the state of Michigan to take advantage of this recycling program. And for 2.6, you think, what does that matter? I counted it out the last night, the average weight of a cigarette butt versus the pounds subtracting for the packaging. It's over 5,000 cigarette butts that are no longer in our ecosystem. All volunteer efforts, de minimis effort of the city. From now until the end of the month, every. From now until the end of the month, every Tuesday at 6:00 PM, I will be at Matson Park to collect cigarette butts from anybody who wants to donate them. Various local businesses and private individuals have given me money and rewards so we can gather as many cigarette butts as we can this month. There's a contest going on, and I'd like Marquette to win it. So remember, the city has employees, but it also has volunteers. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Paul Schlegel, 2030 Wright Street, Marquette. Didn't think I was going to stand up and say anything tonight, but I came here for the brownfield presentation, and I've been around those projects for quite some time, whether it was as a commissioner or on the planning commission, and I've got a pretty good handle on it, but you're still doing something every time these guys come up and spill their, their wares at you and tell you how things work. David Allen and his crew are doing fabulous work, and I want to thank them for it, and as, as did all of you. Then with the strategic plan, man, I'll tell you what, I watched the last meeting. I watched most of the meetings, if not all of them. I watched most of the ad hoc committee meetings for housing. I think that the committee did a nice job of keeping themselves on task after kind of wandering a little bit and wanting to branch out, but then brought themselves in at the end and did a very nice job of compiling some very good information. But with the strategic plan, and, well, I'm going to start there, but with the, the strategic plan, excuse me, it's used as guidance. It's one of these things that we have to rely on, and we have to change it as it comes about, comes to fruition and, and kind of, we start to take things and check them off the checklist and make sure that we're doing what, what the strategic plan has outlined by your city staff. And last time to, to kind of delay that, I think it was kind of nonsense because staff knows what we need to do. These guys are paid to do it every day. You guys come to the meetings and do your time, a few hours a month, I'm sure, maybe, maybe several hours a month, but the fact is, is that when you have staff telling you what's up, you got to really take that into consideration. And I think there's really a need to micromanage as much as you guys have in that last meeting and sending things back. Housing is very important. You guys are in the process of adopting that, that, that plan as it moves forward. I've got a ton to say about it. You want to talk about the county and the city and these other communities getting involved in that type of, of conversation, that's how things are going to happen. It's not just going to happen in the city of Marquette. You want to talk about climate change, you talk about it as a region, you talk about, you know, getting big on it. You know, climate change is real. It's part of the county master plan, it's part of the city's master plan in 2013 when we adopted that, it's in there. I was part of that process on the planning commission. Look it up. It's, it's, it's all part of, it's already in the master plan, now it's time to maybe act on it a little bit more and, and move forward. But I, I guess what I'm just getting frustrated about a little bit tonight was that you got to trust staff, and you got to go to them and say, "These are areas that we find need attention," and let them pursue at the, at the, through the process, which is a word that we've heard 100 times tonight. Use the process. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? City Clerk, no written comments, is that correct? Just making sure.
That's correct.
Thank you. All right, public comment is now closed. That brings us to comments from the commission. We'll start with Commissioner Mayer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll keep it short tonight, but I just wanted to, again, thank staff for all, all your hard work on this, and I'm really looking forward to our next several meetings that we have this month. And I want to also thank my colleagues for quite a bit of lively discussion that we've had over our last few meetings, and being able to move forward and keep things going and still having a good actual discussion and not just rubber stamping things. I think it's very healthy of a process for us to be having, and I think the plan we just approved is probably one of the most thorough that I would suspect the city has had in a while because of that discussion. And I again want to thank staff for your patience on letting us do that and having such an active role in the process this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Thank you, Your Honor. Great meeting tonight, good discussion, moving forward, that's what we want to see. General comment, maybe for staff too, is, you know, we had, we adopted a few years back, maybe longer than I want to remember, complete streets, and part of the complete streets requirement from the state and, and in our ordinance is that a street is more than the roadway in which a car travels. A street also includes the sidewalks, it includes the my, multi-purpose bike paths that may be there too. So we really look at how everybody can use a street, not only a vehicle, but a bike, a bicycler rider, people walking, people on a dog sled in the winter, that's what our streets are. But we close streets down for construction, and then we kind of forget about them. And I think in many cases, we're far too kind to contractors and developers with how long they can close a city street. I think we need to be looking at that very harshly in terms of the street being closed for the minimum time. And we also need to remember that, especially in Marquette, that bike path, that multi-purpose path, is a critical part of who we are. And to see those types of things shut off, because it might be a dead problem, we've got to be safe. We, we get a little bit too carried away, I think, in that direction, forgetting the real purpose that it serves, which is the transportation of people. So as we move through the construction season this year, and as we look at next year, and we look at projects, we've got to have a methodology that we can better control when streets are, are closed. And if we ever come to approve the vault project, we will be living in hell if we can't figure out a better way to control those streets adjacent to the construction site. Other than that, thank you for your time.
Commissioner Bonzel?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll also be brief, but I just wanted to say that I agree with Commissioner Mayer's comments about the discussions that we've had over the last couple of meetings about the strategic plan, but also other issues, I think have been very fruitful. And I also want to strongly agree with what Commissioner Stonehouse was just saying. I, I think that, I mean, I, I know that I've received quite a few complaints at this point from members of the public about pedestrian safety along the rerouted bike path route in South Marquette, and I have to say, I agree with, you know, Ms. Brum's comment, public comment earlier, with Commissioner Stonehouse's comment, that I think that, you know, we, we really, I would hope can find a somewhat better solution that keeps pedestrians and, you know, bicyclists safe during this time, especially given that we're going to have to figure out how to do that properly in the coming years as well. So let's figure it out now, instead of waiting for something unfortunate to happen. And I, I will follow up about that, but it, it's a concern I've heard in the last few days from some, some residents.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes, I too appreciate that you brought that up, Commissioner Stonehouse, and like everyone else, there's been a lot of comments on the, on that particular road. I want to congratulate the, our fire department for a very successful fundraising event for muscular dystrophy, on their annual fill the boot, annual, except for last year, fill the boot. They raised 11,600, and thank you so much to people who are driving by the firemen and, and contributing to that amount. The muscular dystrophy goes to our regional office, but it also sends a lot of local campers to a very important camp for those that are suffering from muscular dystrophy. Ms. Brum brought up the wonderful volunteerism that is in our community, and we have to all be amazed at, at Dan, diver Dan Fossbender's, Don, diver dive, we'll get it eventually, his, his efforts to clean up our local harbor, harbor, and all of the volunteers that have come out, it gets bigger every year. And she didn't mention, she mentioned the tires, but there were two refrigerators that were brought up. Don't know how they get there, but also, Ms. Brum, thank you for your, your cigarette butt collection. And I think many of us pick up cigarette butts all the time, and we all know that they get washed into the stormwater and out into the, well, on the, on the rivers they do, yes. She's shaking her head at me, she knows where exactly the cigarette butts go, but it is a problem, and it is getting better, and efforts like that are really helping to improve it. Thank you.
Commissioner Hanley?
I was going to talk about most of the exact same things that were just touched upon, so thank you, I'm good today.
All right, so a few things. First of all, oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Originally, I had you first, but then we had discussion earlier, it threw me a lot. Mayor Pro Tem, go ahead.
That's fine.
Maybe you'll have a mind.
Well, no, actually, because I just wanted to say that I wanted to endorse Commissioner Mayer and Commissioner Stonehouse. I have also received several complaints and completely agree that we need to bring back those complete street principles. I'm, thank you for raising that, I'm, I'm really glad that that came up, because those have been well-tested, and there are many, many wonderful examples across our country and other countries of how to make that happen, so we don't have to recreate the wheel in any way, we can bring in some wonderful examples that really help streets thrive and help people feel connected and active. And I also want to thank, again, the staff for, there's, because the, the detail behind the strategic plan was very fine-grained, folks have put a lot of time and thought and effort into this, and it, how it's framed is the big picture stuff, and that's the role of, of a commission, is to look at the big picture, and I think we've had a very fruitful conversation about that. Really appreciate that. And I also wanted to thank the police department for the hard work this weekend. It's been, it was a tough weekend in our community, and I really value that, the, the communication and the work that was done, I just wanted to, to thank you for that. And no, my, my final, and then my final comment is about the Delta variant and coronavirus. We, I was part of a, a national phone call of city leaders that came together this week. The Delta variant is basically a new disease that has five times the transmit ability of what we were dealing with before. And so our, the vaccines are a tremendous tool to help us be safe against this, this virus that doesn't care who you are, 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 we are all, as humans, together in this against a virus, and the vaccine is, is an amazing tool. And I, I please ask you to reach out, and if you're wondering how to access this, there will, folks who will make it available to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Pro Tem. All right, I have a few things tonight, sometimes I don't have a lot, so bear with me. So first of all, I wanted to thank Chief Blake Rebal. This is, this is a small thing, but the small things can be big things. I asked him the other day if he would talk with someone who's considering becoming a police officer, and he said, "Yep, just give me my cell phone number." And that is just the kind of dedication I'm so grateful for here in the city of Marquette, that you would go out of your way to help someone who doesn't quite know what direction to go in. Thank you. And I know it was a busy weekend for you and your family as well, so much appreciated. I also wanted to thank all of the organizers, volunteers, donors, businesses. We've had events this summer, and we're going to have a bunch more. So Outback Art Fair, Blueberry Fest, those just happened, fantastic. But if you look on the calendar, coming up before our next commission meeting, I believe, we've got the Harbor Fest, and then the week after, we've got Blues Fest, Beer Fest, we've got people who volunteer their time, who organize, who donate, businesses who come down, we've got the police and the fire department helping out, we've got public works, and those events are really, I think, what we've missed in COVID. I feel like that's, you know, you run into people, that's where ideas happen, and memories, and connections, and it's just so great to have that, that vibe, and luckily, they're outdoor events, so maybe they're moderately more safe, even with the Delta variant, even if we have to mask up sometime in the near future here. I just wanted to thank all those who put so much time and energy into those events, they really are kind of the, the, the pulse of Marquette in a lot of ways. You can really see the connections and the growth, the community building happening. Also, I've got here a note, so we have asked a lot of staff with the strategic plan, I wanted to say thank you all for your work, in addition to also working on a budget right now. So thank you all, I'm looking at you individually, I really appreciate all of the work that you have done and continue to do, even the ones who aren't here tonight. You are appreciated, and I'm sorry that you've got a lot going on, and I thank you for your work. That's what I can say on that. And finally, the last thing I wanted to mention was that our own Commissioner Bonzel is getting married very soon, and I wanted to wish him and his future wife all the best, and the next time we see him, I believe he will be a married man. Congratulations, Commissioner Bonzel. All right, city manager, Karen, go back, do you have anything to add?
So the bike path has been something that has been brought up over the past couple of weeks, and we continue to evaluate and monitor that situation. The reason that the engineers have, have proposed the, the current bike path route or detour is for safety reasons, as it is an active construction zone. I understand that it's hard to see sometimes that there is construction happening there by the time that we are, we are enjoying that path or trying to enjoy that path, although it is closed. And so we are, we are taking a very deep look into that, and we'll be addressing it with staff to reevaluate as we, as we do on any construction project, as we go forward. So bear with us, we do hear the concerns, so please continue to communicate those to us, and we will, we will keep you posted on, on what, what status and what's, where we are in the process for that. So, and thank you very much for, for, you know, the conversations that we've had over the, the past couple of weeks over the strategic plan, the budget, which is also coming up. So the staff is working incredibly hard, and I'm, I'm impressed as coming in from another community. We are very rich with talent here, and I, I cannot say enough about the staff and the department heads and the commission for, for really working together on these things. And, and lastly, to Margaret, I have, I see her often speaking, and sometimes she smiles, sometimes she doesn't, but I have, I have witnessed her giggling and gleaming with joy here when she noticed her cigarette butt recycling containers were being used on the beach. So thank you, Margaret, for that. I, I, I was so excited to witness that. But then also, she did mention the volunteers, that we are, we do have staff, but we also have many volunteers, and the city is amazing because of both of those, so thank you. And that's all.
All right, we are adjourned at 7:22 PM. Thanks, everyone.